Good evening and welcome to the January 21st Meeting of the Governing Body. I call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Hofer, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able, and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Dear Father, thank you for bringing us together today. Thank you for our many and abundant blessings. Let us fully listen to each other, our staff and our citizens with an open mind. Give the governing body, city leaders, and all our civil servants wisdom so that we may solve problems, serve our city well, and bring growth and prosperity to our community. Please keep our police, firefighters, public works, and utility staff safe, especially in this cold weather. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you call the vote, please.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Valdivia Akla.
Here.
Here.
Ortiz.
Burr, I'm here.
Banks.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan. And Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have nine present.
Move on to the second item, the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A is a minutes of a special meeting of January 9, 2025, and the regular meeting of January 14, 2025, and there are no applications.
Okay. Heard those. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Cal, second by Councilwoman Ortiz. If you'll call the vote.
You can make consensus.
Since we've got a couple on.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
And Hofer.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes.
Duncan is here now, my computer's working.
Councilmember Duncan.
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Action Items. Madam Clerk.
A is an election of two city council-voting representatives to serve a one-year term on the Joint Economic Development Organization Board.
Okay. Mr. Stanley, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Amanda Stanley, our city attorney, will lead us through this item.
This is just the election of two JDO members. If you have questions, the city clerk and I are happy to answer them. Need to nominate people and vote.
Okay. I'm gonna give this as instructions, so the people in attendance know what we're doing here. The governing body shall let two council members to serve a one-year term as voting members on the JDO board. The mayor and the deputy mayor will also serve as voting members. Each council member can self-nominate. The two council members receiving the highest number of votes will be elected, providing they have a minimum of six votes. And votes will continue until the voting requirement is met. Okay, at this time, I will open the floor for nominations. And nominations first to serve, Councilman Banks and then Deputy Mayor.
Nominate myself.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
And Councilwoman Hiller.
Councilman Dobler.
I'll move nomination cease.
Okay.
Spencer had his hand up.
Duncan had his hand up. I'll withdraw that.
Okay. Councilman Duncan.
I was gonna just re-nominate myself, but if I don't do it, who will?
Okay. Okay, I've got your name down, sir. Okay. Now, your motion, Councilman Dobler, is to cease nominations?
Yes.
There are no more nominations? The nominations are closed. Okay, so, with, we have one, two, three, four. Currently serving are Councilman Duncan and Councilman Banks, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we have Banks, Miller, Hiller, and Duncan are the four council members nominated. So because we have two people on Zoom, we'll have to do this by roll call vote. So I guess we'll go around the table, and if you just wanna tell me the two that you wanna vote for, that would work.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Hiller.
Hiller, Banks.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Valdivia Akla. Councilmember Ortiz.
Duncan and Banks.
All right, Councilmember Banks.
Duncan, Banks.
Deputy Mayor Cal.
Banks and Miller.
Councilmember Miller.
Banks and Miller.
Councilmember Dobler.
Ditto.
Banks.
Ditto's not on.
Yeah, what's ditto?
Councilmember Duncan.
Duncan and Banks.
Councilmember Hofer.
Duncan and Banks.
And Mayor Padilla. So it looks like Councilmember Banks received 10 votes, Councilmember Duncan received six votes, Councilmember Miller received three votes, and Councilmember Hiller received one vote. So Councilmembers Banks and Duncan will serve as the voting members.
Okay, thank you. That completes the voting. Thank you very much, both of you. Councilman Duncan. Move on to the next item.
B is a public hearing regarding the petition filed by Adam Mosher to vacate public right-of-way for 30 feet of Broad Street, 60 feet of Bowery Street, and an eight-foot wide public alley, and an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez regarding the vacation of a public right-of-way for 30 feet of Broad Street, 60 feet of Bowery Street, and an eight-foot wide public alley, all proud of Central Avenue addition, City of Topeka, Channing County, Kansas.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Dan Warner, our Planning Division Director, will lead us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager.
Adam.
Mayor, governing body. The applicant is requesting, there we go, vacation of an unconstructed alley and unconstructed street in order to build a fence to secure his property. Public utilities will be executed for maintenance of a public sewer main that covers a portion of Bowery Street. We followed a typical process for owner-initiated vacations in that we notified adjacent property owners and met all the legal requirements. The applicant held a neighborhood information meeting. There was no opposition from that meeting, and staff recommends approval of the vacation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dan on this item? Also, this item requires a public hearing, correct? City Attorney? So at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to this matter. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? And for the final time, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion on this particular item? Move to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Miller. You'll take the vote, please.
Councilmembers Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hiller.
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Move to Action Item C. Madam Clerk.
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by approving a major amendment to the planned unit development for Paradise Providence Place to allow a crisis center type II in association with and accessory to the principal use of religious assembly on property located at 2401 Southeast 11th Street.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Dan Warner, our Planning Division Director, will lead us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager.
Dan.
Mayor, governing body. This next case is a proposal to revise the current PUD zoning on the property to allow a crisis center type II. This proposal includes residents for up to six homeless individuals, two caretaker staff, a clothing and food pantry, and emergency seasonal homeless shelter for up to 20 residents. The seasonal homeless shelter is limited to October 16th to April 15th, and more specifically is limited to those times when the city requests assistance for warming shelter from the community. The current use of the property is religious assembly. The applicant held a neighborhood information meeting, and no opposition was expressed at that meeting. Planning Commission considered this item at their last meeting and recommended approval. Staff recommends approval as well. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Dan? Councilwoman Ortiz.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and also for sake of discussion.
Okay. We do have to ask for any ex parte communications, and then I'll take your motion. Prior to proceeding with the vote, each member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that the communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in that communication, they were able to fairly, objectively, and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the Planning Commission minutes, the staff report and its attachments, the public comments made during the Planning Commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. So I'll ask any of the governing body, if there were any ex parte communications they wish to reveal. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I've received, this is in my district, I've received emails, I've had conversations, and I also received a letter. And I can be impartial and make a fair vote.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing none, further? Okay, Councilwoman Ortiz, she wanted to make a motion.
Want to make a motion for the sake of discussion?
Okay. Motion for sake of discussion, is there a second? Second one by Councilman Hiller. Take the roll, please. For the motion to, for discussion, right?
Well, I want to make a motion, and then I'd like to have discussion, so.
Okay. Well, if we can make a mo, vote on the motion, and then if approved, then we will have discussion before we take the vote. Is that correct?
No. No, just make a motion.
Okay.
She was just opening the issue with the motion.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Sir, a second?
Oh, there's a second. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say Bishop Mitchell and his wife, if you'd please stand, they do so much, open arms. They call me, they have done it all. And so I was really pleased, pleased to see this. Their church has just been growing. They're kinda like those people that are just silent, don't want really any recognition, but they have their hands all over in the community, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them and publicly thank them for all the good work that they do, from giving out, from letting me come over and enjoy the Lord with them. They have really made that little area just what it needs. And it's between Paradise Plaza, two low to modern income projects where that it's much needed. So I just want to thank you again, and I would just encourage my colleagues to vote for this. They're doing everything they can to make sure on their side that they're doing what they're supposed to do, so I would encourage you to vote for this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any further comment? Is there a motion to approve?
There's a question. Yeah.
Pardon?
We already have a motion.
Okay, well, I thought we were doing the discussion piece, all right? So we'll take the vote. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Ortiz.
Absolutely, yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
And Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion carries, and I want to echo Councilwoman Ortiz's compliments to you, and thank you for your work in the community, sir. Amen. Okay, we'll move to Action Item D. Madam Clerk.
D is a funding agreement between Gen III Construction and Development LLC in the City of Topeka, Kansas, and a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, providing notice that the city is considering establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district for the Sherwood Village Park, adopting a plan for the development of housing and public facilities in the proposed RHID, and establishing the date and time of a public hearing.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Rhiannon Freeman, our Director of Planning and Development Services, will lead us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, members of the governing body. Brenda kind of stole my talking points here, but essentially, what we're here tonight to do is to seek approval of a funding agreement for Gen III Construction LLC for their proposed RHID at Sherwood Village Park. This funding agreement would essentially allow the city to have the developer pay for the cost of us doing the analysis and the financial impact study that we'll bring before you for the RHID. And then the second part of this would be to set a public hearing for February 11th to bring it forward for public comment, and yeah.
Okay. We have questions for Rhiannon?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Miller, and second by Deputy Mayor Cal. You'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Banks.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
And Ortiz.
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion carries, we move to Action Item E. Madam Clerk.
E is a funding agreement between Union Development Holdings LLC in the City of Topeka, Kansas, and a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, providing notice that the city is considering establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district for the Union at Tower District, adopting a plan for the development of housing and public facilities in the proposed RHID, and establishing the date and time of a public hearing.
Mr. State Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Rhiannon Freeman, our Director of Planning and Development Services, will lead us through this item.
Thank you, me again. So, very similar to the last project, Union Development Holdings seeking a funding agreement with the city to allow them to pay for the cost for us to do the analysis of the Union at Tower District RHID that's being proposed. So we'll be seeking approval of that funding agreement, and then also looking to set the public hearing for February 18th.
Okay. Any questions for Rhiannon? Councilwoman Hiller.
No questions, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Hiller, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Dobler. Okay.
Councilmembers Hiller. Oh, sorry, Cal.
Oh, yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan. Is he on there?
Councilmember Duncan, can you hear us?
Oh, yeah, did I say yes? Oh, I did.
Very good.
Can you hear me?
In your head.
Councilmember Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
And Banks.
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, motion carries.
Okay. Move to Action Item F. Madam Clerk.
F is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez authorizing the Deputy City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and Director of Administrative and Financial Services to sign specific contracts on behalf of the city pursuant to Charter Ordinance Number 94, codified at Section A 255 of the Code of the City of Topeka.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. I believe a motion may be made by one of your colleagues. Councilman Duncan, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. So, if everyone recalls, this was brought forward as the last meeting of the year. I will only speak for myself. At that time, I expressed a few concerns about the breadth of it being a little, maybe too comprehensive. A few other council members expressed the same, with the desire to maybe make some tweaks to it, and caught this pop back up on the agenda because we deferred it to this month. In talking with staff, I would like to, we would like to take a look at it in the Policy and Finance Committee, which it can actually start next week, we have a meeting next week, and then bring it back to you hopefully in the next month or so. Goal's not to delay, just to tweak it so everybody's comfortable with it. So with that, I would move to send this to the Policy and Finance Committee for review and discussion.
Okay. Second. There's a motion by Councilman Duncan, second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Any other discussion? Seeing none, call the vote, please.
Councilmembers Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akla.
No.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
And Cal.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, with Councilmember Valdivia Akla voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. Motion carries, we'll move to Agenda Item Four, non-action item. Madam Clerk.
A is discussion concerning camping prohibitions amending Section 945, 350, and 360 of the Topeka Municipal Code.
Mr. State Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. I will defer to Councilmembers Valdivia Akla and Councilmember Dobler. My staff will be here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Councilwoman Valdivia Akla.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, you would see it in your background what the changes are. There's gonna be changes to line 26, line 41, line 60, but I think we're also gonna have an additional change in line 62. I will ask, though, my colleague, Councilman Dobler, to come in and speak a little bit too. I think we may end up tweaking lines 41 to 46, specific, in that area, you'll see it all underlined, but specifically line 44. Councilman Dobler, can you speak a little bit to that wastewater delivery system that we might tweak?
Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Councilwoman Hiller brought up the question about, we, the intent here is to cover public systems, government, government structures, facilities, highways, roadways, things like that. We have currently water delivery systems, wastewater delivery systems, which actually should be collection systems. Hopefully, we're not delivering wastewater anywhere. Electrical generation systems, which is fine, electrical transmission systems, communication transmission systems. Those are the ones I think we internally talked about tweaking a little bit. Frankly, we're within 100 feet of any roadway or highway, that's gonna cover almost all the underground utilities, and I think it's a good point. I don't think we need to cover underground utilities and transmission lines and things like that, because that may lead to difficulty when we identify some places where camping will be legal. So what I would propose is to, and, you know, on the utility side, particularly water and wastewater, what we're talking about is pump stations, towers, obviously the plants themselves. I believe, and I'll check with the city attorney, I believe those are probably well-covered between government buildings, government facilities, facilities operated by the government for public use. I would think that would cover any of those. So I would suggest that on line 44, we delete water delivery systems, wastewater delivery systems. On line 45, we eliminate electrical transmission systems, not generation, just transmission. And then 45 and 46, communication transmission system. Councilwoman Valdivia Akla, does that seem reasonable to you?
Yes, sir.
So I would, I guess we won't be making a motion, I would ask that those tweaks get made if there's a consensus here. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akla, is there more that you would like to speak to on those?
You broke that there.
Is there more you would like to add on these two, on these changes or suggested changes?
Thank you. I would not, you know, I think the reason that this amendment came forward is because we had realized, not only in my district, but, you know, was getting calls from other locations, that concerns about encampments, one example would be used, the encampment so close to the nursing home, where there was a number of things that were displayed to elders that, you know, they did not need to be seen. And there was issues with trash and gunshots in the area, not particular area, once the encampment had moved in, and the lack of safety that this elder home and the owners of it had expressed. So I think that that was the beginning impetus of it, but my view is that it still needed, you know, to be tightened up a little bit. So after, you know, discussion with Councilman Dobler and some work by some individuals in the city staff, including legal, we came up with this, and of course, you know, sometimes these things need tweaking, so that's what we're doing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Dobler, and then Deputy Mayor Cal.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I just point out there's some changes here that really just make more sense, I think, when we're talking about camping. We mentioned recreational vehicles, travel trailers, things like that. That makes more sense at this point, I think, and then we changed. Originally, we had 500 feet from any infrastructure, and that's been changed to 100 feet, again on the suggestion of Councilwoman Hiller, which really makes a lot more sense. So those are some of the major changes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Cal, and then Councilwoman Ortiz.
I think a big thing about this is signage, because without the signage, it may not be known, and when, we just experienced a bridge fire the other day, what it was, I forget what day I had, what it was, but it was like within the last two weeks. And so that's where we're getting into structural issues that are affecting the citizens of Topeka. We've had it, I believe, on the Kansas Avenue Bridge a few years ago. So I think signage would do a big part in that aspect, especially under the bridges, before we have sections of our community cut off from each other, because a bridge becomes unsafe to drive across.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I'm not mistaken, you know, I thought I did ask you about the railroads. Is that 500 feet or 100 feet from the railroad tracks, or is that in there, Amanda?
It would be 100 feet of public infrastructure, which I believe railroads is under public rail infrastructure, so that would be 100 feet within, 100 feet from the railroad, not 500.
Okay. Do we know how we came up with the 100? Is that standard, or?
That was in communications between the council members and TPD, so I don't know how the 100 was arrived at.
Mr. Mayor, if I can call Lieutenant Major Cross up here. I know I had talked to him about, oh, can you answer it? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just talked to him before about it, so I just was.
Yeah, and he can verify this. I think when, we originally had 500, and then you kind of do the map of 500 feet from everything, and there's not much left. So then it was a series of iterations until we got down to 100 feet that seemed reasonable. Still seems, leaves a lot of property available for camping at some point where we're going to potentially designate camping areas. So that's, I think, a major of that.
Major, do you want to add anything to? I'm, I'm just concerned, you know, the incident that we had struggled with, that there was nothing around there, and we had struggled with that. And I'm finding more and more people closer and closer to the railroad tracks.
I think our 100 feet, though, looking back at the District Two issue we looked at, where railroad tracks became the issue, 100 feet would get us there.
Okay.
And would make that a prohibition. However, like, the 500 feet was kind of just an estimate to blanket, cover more space. Councilwoman Hiller's recommendation, looking at 100 feet, seems much more reasonable, looking around, too, as Councilman Dobler mentioned, if we're going to designate some camping space in the future, not having to override that, so.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Neil. Thank you, Major.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Would this cover sidewalks? Okay, I didn't see it in that list of items there, so I was just trying to make sure.
Councilwoman Hofer.
I have a question for Major Cross. Our problem that we had, I think, was on Burnett.
Yes.
And we had all the problems with trying to identify the homeowner versus the tenant versus everything going on. There's a section in here that talks about upon private property except by the owner of record or a lawful tenant for a period not to extend 10 days within a six-month period. Do you think that's going to help cut down the amount of time they were in the backyard camping because it took us two months?
It took us more than two months. It was almost four months for us to accomplish that. And what that does is that does allow for someone who's got a family member or a friend who's in a rough spot or is transitional and needs a place to camp to be able to lawfully do so without being a permanent problem for the neighborhood. It also allows us to not have to do special permitting for things, like if you had a Boy Scout get-together in the backyard or something, you wouldn't have to get a special permit for that, as long as your campout didn't go beyond the ten days.
I'm just, I'm hoping that this will cut down on our time, your time, to investigate and get something accomplished because that just, it's like we started the clock and then we had to start it again and start it again.
Right. And without what's in the current proposal, what we've had to do is rely on sanitation concerns to be our avenue for any enforcement for those residential campings. And this proposal will give us that opportunity and that ability to enforce those 10-day maximum campings on residential properties that we did not have, which is why it took us so long previously.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a list of questions, and some of them got addressed, and I need to follow up on a couple. And if I can ask Major Cross while he's still here, RVs was one of them, because I have had, in my district in the past, our people told they can't be in RVs. And so your, your assessment here is that with permission of the property owner, people could have an occupied RV as long as it's on a paved surface indefinitely?
No, that would only, I mean, that would still be camping. That would fall, I mean.
There are more specific rules for RVs. So RVs can only be in the backyard for a more specific time period. That would control over a camping ordinance. In the front yard, there are other limitations. So that is the more specific ordinance specifically for RVs, that would control over this camping.
Because I wondered, we have on the, what, line 22 and elsewhere, line 22 references a parked vehicle, but we don't define vehicle. And I wonder if, if we're clarified, because that idea of being able to park a camper someplace and stay in it is pretty appealing if people have access to one. We shouldn't find some language that would perhaps just define vehicle as to include an RV as well as a truck or a car might help on that. Just, just a suggestion. I also ask a question about, sometimes people are building their own shelters, and those are not addressed in this ordinance either. And I wonder if we need either reference to that or, for a variety of reasons, and I think most people know, some of us really worked on a camping ordinance before, and there, what we did was highlight, you can't be in violation of any of our local ordinances, which takes care of the trash, takes care of illegal activity, takes care of dog running loose, takes care of building a, a structure without a permit. I suppose it could be argued that it goes without saying that you're not supposed to be in violation of any of our other city ordinances, but it, as just a suggestion again, it might be helpful to go ahead and say that, and that would cover those various things that are really why people have been unhappy about camping. It's not so much the campers, people seem to care a lot about that, but it's, it's all that other. So I wanted to suggest that. And one other question I had was, went back and forth a little bit on, but I'm not sure I'm clear, because the last answer wasn't clear. One of the concerns we tried to protect when we worked on this before was the fact that we're, while people are working on homelessness, we're also working on recreational development of use of the river. And, and so there was a question about recreational camping in a spot. And the question that came, that was still hanging in the back and forth of my questioning about it was, who, I know we're responsible for the river in many ways, we're responsible for the levees, but who would be responsible for managing whether or not people could pitch a tent on a sandbar?
I don't believe we have jurisdiction over the sandbars.
If we don't, but, but we are the city, and we've said nobody can be within 500 feet of a levee, would that superimpose over the fact that the state's responsible for the sandbars?
I don't, I would have to verify, but I don't believe we have jurisdiction, so we can't give a ticket over something we don't have jurisdiction on. So I, I'll have to verify sandbars.
If, if we could, I just, it's, you know, we're in the county. If the county says certain things or countywide, then they, they apply to us. And so I was just wanting to make sure we knew on that one. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Valdivia, or, or, Councilwoman Valdivia, go ahead.
Just call me Christina. Anyway, thank you for those suggestions. City Attorney, you know, obviously discussion. I really like that addition of, you know, making sure that you're following all of our ordinance language put in there, as well as the addition of identifying what a vehicle actually is. So, you know, I don't know how the rest of the governing body feels, or if there's any, you know, moves to say, I don't like that, but I would encourage that to be added. We can talk about, you know, this tomorrow, and add the additional pieces to, and then share it with Councilman Dobler and myself. Thank you, Mayor.
Further? Okay. Well, thank you for the comments and the additional suggestions. Okay. And move on to public comment. At this point, we have one person signed up. Wendy Thomas.
Do you just use the podium?
Hi, City Manager, Mayor, governing body. I just, I know we've beat Snowmageddon to death at this point, and I wasn't able to come to the last meeting, but I had a question on specifically cul-de-sacs. I live in a cul-de-sac, and I've lived there for 29 years, excuse me, and we don't ever see a blade up there. So it's not just specific to this last issue, but we had people stuck as late as last Friday, service people. I have a lot of elderly people on my cul-de-sac, and so we had to go out and help. It was blue dots specifically for one of our neighbors. And I, the rhetoric that I keep hearing is, we don't do cul-de-sacs. Well, I don't get a discount on my taxes either, so I pay the same as the people with straight road to, to get service. So I'm just trying to get an idea. I'm not asking to be first or to be ahead of anybody, but I'm trying to get an idea of where we fall within a trip, you know, for the, to, to get our, our cul-de-sac bladed. Because we, we get, I'm at a very high area. I'm at 3541 Southwest West Park Court. So we're at the top of Horn Park. So where we are, we obviously catch a lot of drifts. We're, it's a pretty high elevated area. So I, I'm just asking, do, do we have a certain thing saying we aren't going to do cul-de-sacs? No? Okay. All right. So I just want to make it clear that I'm, I'm in hopes that in the future, and like I said, it's not just this past snow that was the issue. I've been in that same place 29 years, and, and it's, we just don't get, get anybody to do any blading up there. So I'm in hopes that we can bring some attention to that and that we can get in line maybe third or the fourth time around and get some help.
City Manager, if you would, if you would, ma'am. Go ahead.
Ma'am, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Steve Grohn, our Director of Public Works, to get with you.
Okay.
As soon as you finish here.
Okay.
And for, just so everybody knows, we do plan to debrief the, the entire city council on February 4th. But typically, our, our big piles, wherever, they have a hard time making a circle around in the cul-de-sacs.
Sure.
But yeah, definitely, if you can get with Steve, and I'll have Steve to, to meet here in a second to discuss it with you, and we'll get, we'll get service over there.
Okay. I appreciate it. And we made sure no more cars or anything were in the, you know, in the way, just because I know that becomes a problem. And I appreciate it. I just wanted to take some time to try to get some attention to that. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we'll move to announcements. Madam clerk.
We have no council meeting next week, but there will be a citizen government review committee meeting on January 29th at 11:00 a.m. in the Cyrus K. Holliday Building, located in the first floor conference room at 620 Southeast Madison Street.
Okay. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to recognize Chris Vallejo, our new police chief, is in the back there with Jamie and Chief Phillips. His first day was supposed to be today, but we had the incident occur on Friday evening, so, so he actually started Friday evening with us. And, and the same man also wants to recognize Deputy Chief Holtham for his leadership over the last seven, eight months. Did a fantastic job as far as leading the department. And again, just wanted to recognize those two gentlemen. Thank you, Mayor.
If we could have a round of applause for both of them, I appreciate it. Councilwoman Hofer.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller.
Just a follow-up thank you to our public works people for all the efforts in snow removal. We know there's a list of how we could maybe do this better next time, but we also know, hope that it won't happen in a long time as well, as well as the water guys and the others that are out, you know, digging up water mains when it's 10 below on no notice whatsoever. Appreciate everybody in the city, but citizens as well, again, for everything through the last couple of weeks. That's it.
Okay. Councilwoman Valdivia, Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. Just kudos to all staff, especially those that are out there breaking the extreme cold. You know, just want to say a warm welcome to new Chief Vallejo and also to interim Police Chief Holtham, who did a really good job, always accessible, very encouraged by that calm demeanor and just really laid back presence, but he always got down to it, which I really, really appreciate. Also, just wanted to give a quick shout out of love and encouragement to my little sister, Catherine Diane Valdivia, whose birthday is today. She is a hard-working spin teacher in the Fauconland School System. Love you, Mina, and have a blessed evening. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank Chief Holtham. I did promise him it wouldn't be over here, so I'm glad we got, we got somebody in there. To the new chief, Chris, if you could come forward, I'd like to give you what I give all of my new people when they, when they come to Topeka. I give them a free smoke alarm application. Because I care, because I care. And I want to keep all of our citizens safe.
She's trying to put the fire, the fire company out of business. Yeah.
So I, I want you to fill this out. It's just real simple. You fill it out, you give it to your buddy, the police chief, the fire chief.
Yeah.
And our guys will come out, and they will put up free, free, I said, 10-year smoke alarms with batteries. You don't have to change them for 10 years. So what I do is I give them to all of our new residents, and then if you know somebody, I'll give you another one. You can, you're going to meet somebody along the way. Give them one. Okay, then I'll give you a few. We got, we got Spanish, English on one side, Spanish on the other, okay? So, so we're, we want to do that, okay? Then they'll know you're in touch and you care because we want to help our Topeka Fire Department out.
Absolutely.
So welcome. You're officially welcomed. You didn't get the key to the city yet, but you're officially welcome. And I do follow through to see if you have filled that out, and the guys have checked you out.
I sure will.
Now, I do want to say this, one more thing before you sit down. I did give that out, and there's a gentleman that went out and bought 15 of them. You don't need to buy any of them. Just need to fill that one out, because he kept hearing my mouth. So he went out one Christmas and bought 15. I don't know how it sounds when they all go, all go off. I won't mention who it is, but anyway.
Thank you so much.
Also, I'm long overdue with our new city manager. You might give him one, two, to make sure.
Got it. My water.
Thank you. Thank you. And if there's anybody else, I do carry them around, and we do have plenty in the council office, so don't hesitate to call and get one. On a serious note, it's very cold. It's very cold. People are running space heaters. People are running space heaters that are put, picked, plugged up to extension cords, and that's really, really sad. And I think Banks can follow up and tell you how, how that's a no-no. So no, I'm not an expert in fire, but I've been around, I've rode on the truck, and I've been to some locations to see them, and they're, they're not a good thing. So we need to help them. Again, if we can just call the administrative building and get one, or you could call me, or you can call any council member, and they can call me up here. But we really need to help our guys, especially in the low to moderate income area. The houses are closer, and the wiring is not as good. So anything that we can do, Mayor, I know this is in October, and I apologize for taking so much time, but it's important. I just cringe, cringe when I see that. I, I too would like to thank our staff. I started getting those water break alerts, and I don't know if I should, if that was the right thing to do, because every time they pop up, I'm like, good lord, another one, another one. So I'd like to thank them for being out there and doing all that they've done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank our public for coming forward when they have issues. I would just like for them to know that even though we don't have back and forth, the concerns that you bring to us certainly resonate. that you bring to us certainly resonate, and we make sure that someone gets back with you. But I think it makes me feel more confident that our public can come in and talk to us and share some of those things that they feel are important to them, and they are important to us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's a good point. Deputy Mayor Carroll?
Well, to defend Councilman Duncan, about a year ago, I went out and bought seven or eight myself, so I, he's not the only one that went out and bought a bunch. Like to thank Deputy Chief Holtham for all he did. I've heard very great things from the public since he's taken over as interim chief. A lot of positive things, and I relayed that to him in the past, but it seemed like he had a very good handle on the department as our interim chief. My oldest turns 21 next week, so I feel like I'm getting old. I'm only 45, but it just feels a lot older than that when you start thinking of your kids' age. When it comes to the cold, please, 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 take care of your animals. Set a timer so you make sure you get them. I always set a stove timer when it's this cold, so my stove, you know, goes off, and I know to go out and get them if they want to come in or not. So, please, take care of your animals. Do not keep them out overnight. I know this week, well, they go, it's a certain breed that loves the cold. This is getting very, very nasty out there this week, so please, take care of your animals. On that point, take care of your neighbors. Make sure your neighbors are doing okay. Make sure that if they don't have electricity or gas, make sure that they have the proper ways to bundle up. Make sure that their space heaters are safe distances from where they're trying to bundle up, from furniture, that type of stuff. It's nasty out there, so when the fire has to come out and spray water around somewhere, it's going to get even nastier for the homeowner, for the neighbors, and for the fire department. So, please, during this cold, cold nastiness, take care of your neighbors, take care of your animals. Thank you very much.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have anything, and then she had a wonderful thought coming up for, when Ms. Thomas, for public comment, and it made me thinking about our procedures, and I just wanted to think about, is there, is it possible for us to kind of switch our public comment to where, if there's a point of clarification that we need to make from the city staff on something that's said at public comment, is there a way for us to be able to have that option instead of just kind of begging for it in that moment? Can we have the conversation with, what's your thoughts on that?
It's the Mayor's option to go ahead and allow a response, which I did tonight. We can do, continue to do that.
On case-by-case basis?
I think that's wise, because you'll get into a back-and-forth argument without any resolution. I'd rather be able to respond and then have a follow-up contact later on, so more discussion can be had with the issue.
Cool. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. It is cold out there. This is the time of year I wish I had hair. Nothing seems to work, so I guess I'm stuck.
Oh, gosh.
You know, we've got a lot of thanks going out. Thank you. Yeah, OKC, can't do it, sorry. We've got a lot of thanks going out. I wanted to say thank you to a county agency that serves a lot of us, and that's Shawnee County Refuge. Where I live, like a lot of folks, there's hills, and it was difficult for them to get in, and they skipped, had to skip trash and recycling for a week. And I didn't think they were going to make it back out, but they did. Made it back around for everything, did a great job, so that's a tough job. It's every bit as tough as the public works and utilities folks face if you're riding on the back of a truck in weather like this. It is, it is difficult. So, again, thanks to everybody that's out there weathering this, this time of the year and keeping us safe and keeping the services going. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. I did a thing today, for better or worse. I've always said, if you invite me to come speak with you or to your group or organization or whatever it may be, I will show up, even if we're not in total disagreement on some things. I think those conversations are healthy and important. I was making the exception, if you're some kind of crazy hate group, don't even pick up the phone. But with that, outside of that, so today, I went on Henry McClure's podcast, and I spent 90 minutes going back and forth with Mr. McClure, talking about everything from Jettow to the hotel to sort of our history and where we agreed on some things and where we disagreed on some things, and it was about 90 minutes. So, I'm promoting me on this one, not necessarily Mr. McClure, but you can certainly go see that interview on my Facebook pages, @SpencerDuncan and Spencer L. Duncan. We touched a lot of issues that I know I'm getting a lot of emails about, so I think it's a good way for people to sort of catch up on where we at on some of those. So, I'll put that out there. And the second piece of that tonight is, if you go to my website, duncanfortopeka.com, I've posted all the way through June, my open office hours starting February through June, so people can see the calendar. So, I just wanted to let people know that it's officially been posted. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You know, a little bit of follow-up on Councilman Miller's idea, suggestion. I don't think it'd be a far leap for when we have somebody who comes and presents an issue like we had this evening or other evenings, that if they leave their contact information with the clerk, that the clerk will make sure it gets to that department head or to the city manager, so some follow-up can be done in some detail. So, I would encourage that if somebody would like a more lengthy response, something more than just what we can do in four minutes, leave your contact information. Typically, we'll have your name, phone number. If we get an email, that way, a department head can contact you, would give you more detail to maybe help you through the issue that you have. So, that's not a bad idea. Also, can I finish?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Also, I'd like to be able to join in with the course of what Deputy Chief Holtham did for us during the interim and during her search. It's important for the city of Topeka to feel like it's got a good, strong leader, keeping an eye on everything, and he did just that, and he did it in a manner and tone which I think was supportive of everybody's needs in a way that it didn't step aside. He took those challenges head-on with calm and professionalism. So, again, Deputy Chief, thank you, along with everyone else. You will be a good person to help our new chief along in getting used to the city. You'll be a good resource, and it does exactly what the second-in-command does. So, both of you, I think, have a lot of good times ahead of you here in Topeka. So, thank you both for what you're doing. The other thing I might ask, and everybody has mentioned the cold, and it's going to come back to you, police officers, in a way, here. There's more than once now, when I've left council meeting, the driving home, especially last time, and the snow was coming down, I saw no less than three or four people trudging through the snow, dragging suitcases, obviously with no place to take shelter, to get in out of the elements. It's disheartening to see that in our city. I hope that, and would encourage that, without straining our resources, when we see that, make a phone call to the police department. If nothing else, those officers, given the opportunity, can go out and check on that person's welfare. Maybe they've said no before to taking shelter, but a contact with an officer during that time of need might make a difference. It's just something that I think we need to do. We need to just put out one more effort, a little more effort to some of these people who just don't have anything to do but to try and find a little cubbyhole, maybe, to get in and out of the snow and the ice. So, yes, it is dangerous weather. Don't approach, be careful, but you can make a phone call to the police department, and I'm hoping, and I'm sure, the police department will respond in a way that'll be helpful to those people who have a need. So, I want to thank you for everything that you're doing tonight. There is no need for an executive session, so unless there's any further business that comes before this body, the meeting. Deputy Mayor?
Just wanted to bring up that we do have professional hockey coming back to Topeka here this next season, but we do have teams that are existing in the league coming to do some games here the next two weekends in Topeka. So, after about 20 years of professional hockey being gone from Topeka, we will start having that back this weekend and starting next season.
Okay, thank you. No further business coming before this body, the meeting is adjourned.